Can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Segras, can you please take roll call?
Borninski.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Trustee Foster is not in attendance. Ganguly.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let the Clerk Segras is in attendance. Slavens.
Good evening.
And Snyderman.
I am present.
Thank you. I'd like to have a motion to adopt the agenda with revised item G5, and we are tabling item G1.
So moved.
Moved by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Agenda is adopted. The first item on the agenda is a dangerous building show cause hearing for 1822 North Sheldon. I do not believe the owners are in the audience. I'm going to go to attendees. If you are, as an attendee, owners for the hearing, could you please raise your hand?
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to open the show cause hearing on 1822 North Sheldon Road, Menal, Chada, Chehada, and 621.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the dangerous building hearing is open. I'm just looking for some hands under attendees to see if anyone, if the owners are here for the dangerous building hearing before I begin. Okay, I don't see anyone. All right, let me start.
Wait five minutes.
Yeah, wait five minutes.
Well, can you go ahead?
I can, yeah, I will read the...all right. "There's a property that has failed to meet the requirements and deadlines established by the hearing officer following dangerous building hearings as prescribed by township ordinance and state law. In light of the failures to comply, the board must take action to set a public hearing, at which the property owners must be given an opportunity to show cause why the hearing officer's order should not be enforced. The hearings must occur at least 30 days after the meeting at which the board sets the hearing, and notice of the date and time chosen shall be sent to the property owner. Following the hearings at which both the property owners and township staff shall be given the opportunity to speak, the board must decide that the determination of the hearing officer should be carried out as ordered, whether the order need not be followed or whether there is some other appropriate resolutions to the matters. The original show cause hearing was scheduled for December 14, 2021, however, needed to be rescheduled due to unforeseen circumstances." Director Smith, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I can just add a couple of comments, and then our building official, Rob Kramer, is here too, that can add some more information if necessary. You were given a packet at the last meeting and then also today, but I think the third page in shows a chronological list of events that have happened since July 22 of 2020, and probably more importantly, out of those dates was December of 2020, when we have requested and worked with the property owner in regards to getting engineers on site to take a look at the structural soundness of the home, and it is not structurally sound to be lived in. We tried to work with the homeowner. You can see from the lengthy packet that we did submit with the pictures of the property, this is, this is an uninhabitable home, and went before the dangerous building hearing officer, and it was deemed that it needed to come down, or there needed to be renovations made to it, and that have not been complied with, so we are here tonight before you, and I don't know if Mr. Kramer or Mr. Hook want to add anything else. And the petitioner, the property owner, was notified, so they knew that the hearing was, was tonight.
Robert Kramer, building official, Canton Township. We notified, I emailed, and we sent the owner the new date for the hearing, which is today, and she, there was a signed receipt that we received, that she did receive the certified mail, and they have not shown up. Like Mr., like Jade has been telling you, the, the building is not habitable at all. We had the place out twice in, in December because somebody had gone in and was living in the closet with candles, vagrant, and they couldn't catch the person either time, but we ended up having to pay Balfour to board the house up. So the house is continuing to be a nuisance to the township. So at this point, if the township orders that the hearing officer's decision remain, we would give the owner of the home 21 days to obtain permit and tear the house down, or the township would do it and put the bill on the taxes.
Okay, thank you. So, under the rules for the hearing, we would normally allow the resident, the owners, five minutes to speak, and I will look again under attendees to see if anyone has raised their hand. There is one phone line, it's 949. You can hit star seven. I do not see anyone. Should we wait the five minutes then, Clerk Segras?
Your discretion.
Okay. By the rules, okay.
We would like to wait. We can wait.
Okay, we'll give it three more minutes. After that, we have five minutes for the Township Board to ask questions, and five, and normally five minutes for the rebuttals Okay, do any board members have any discussion or questions for Director Smith or Rob Kramer or the ordinance officers?
I would just ask if approved tonight, when would it be demolished?
The last pages of the docket, it tells you that once the board approves that the order of demolition was to be done within 21 days after the date of the hearing. And if they don't do it after that, that's when the township would act, and we have a fund that's set up to do these, where we would, we would bid it out and take the lowest bid and tear it down, and then we would assess the bill to the taxes for the property.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
If I can just expand on that just a little bit. So, yeah, 21 days is when the property owner would have the ability to do that. After that, it reverts back to our responsibility. I can say that we have had other demolitions in the community, both through this process, and others where DTE has been a little, they've been a hurdle in getting the power shut off because they, they need information, they needed to get the information directly from the property owner. So we've been working with Kristen in the legal department in regards to communicate with DTE that when these types of hearings occur and that we have an order to cut, to take the building down, that they need to accept that as an official document to get the power shut off. So I think they were doing it to protect themselves against turning the power off on someone mistakenly, and so with this process, we could see a delay in the demolition just because of the hurdle that we have with DTE, but we are actively working through that.
Diane?
And I assume it's still boarded up. Are you having issues with people trying to get in? Yeah, you still are. Okay.
Is it boarded up?
Okay.
Still boarded?
Still boarded. Okay, thank you.
Was it this December when you noticed, December 1st, when you noticed that there were footprints going up to the building, that somebody was residing in it?
Right.
And then three days later, after speaking to the homeowner, they indicated they would board it up, but it was not boarded up?
I heard, when I found out that somebody was staying in there.
Sorry, just can't hear you on the line of the screen.
Mark Hook, ordinance officer. On the first, that was one of the days I was out there checking, and I saw the footprints in the snow. Had police come out and check it. That time, we found somebody had been living in there. Contacted the property owner. They said they'd be out to board it up, so we left it. I came back on the third, and somebody had been in there, they hadn't really boarded it up. Somebody had been back in there, and some of the stuff that had been in there before had been removed, some of the personal belongings, whoever was staying there. We contacted them again, we got the kind of the runaround, so we had Balfour boarded up correctly, and it's been secure since.
Okay, and I'm just going to assume if the board decides tonight to concur with the decision, and we do indicate that we want it demolished, we would make a sweep of the building prior to demolition to ensure that nobody was inside. That's got to be standard operating procedure. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I still, if, I'm looking to see if the owners might have attendance since, if they want to have any further question and answer period. I don't see any hands stating they are the owners of the property at 1822 North Sheldon Road. Okay, can I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, can I have a motion, please, for the dangerous building show cause hearing?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the determination the board trustees upon hearing all the evidence submitted and reviewing documents is to uphold the hearing officer's decision and to order the demolition of 1822 North Sheldon Road.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Mr. Snyderman. Are there any board discussions or questions on that? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for January 11, 2022.
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Okay, the next item is for public comments on agenda items only. So, public comment on agenda items only. Do I see any hands in attendees for agenda items only, public comment? Public comment, public comment, agenda items only. Not seeing any. Thank you. We will move on to the payment of the bills.
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Ganguly. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Moving on to the consent calendar, next item on the agenda.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move that the board approve the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, request approval to establish a command, MERS Hybrid Plan. Item C2, request approval of 2022 blanket purchase orders. C3, consider approval of application for MLCC special liquor licenses. And item C4, consider purchase of water meters and metering control devices for 2022.
Deport.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Borninski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Next item is the general calendar, item G2, Consider Chipotle Plan Development District Amendment Number Three of Walmart PDD.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move that the board approve the following resolution, the approval of Walmart Plan Development District Amendment Number Three for Chipotle. Whereas project sponsor has requested approval of amendment number three to Walmart Plan Development District for Chipotle located on the south side of Michigan Avenue between Belleville Road and Beck Road, and whereas Planning Commission reviewed the amended plan development plan and plan development agreement and voted eight to zero to recommend approval of the request with conditions, as it is consistent with the Walmart Plan Development and complies with the applicable site design requirements of the zoning ordinance except where modifications are approved. Now therefore be it resolved, the board trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the amendment number three to Walmart Plan Development District on its subject tax parcel at 45555 Michigan Avenue as provided in the Plan Development District Agreement, Amendment, and Plan Documents, subject to all applicable state, county, municipal development requirements except where modifications to the zoning ordinance have been granted.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Borninski. The applicant proposes to split 1.1 acres from the Walmart parcel on Michigan Avenue with the intent of constructing a Chipotle fast food restaurant with a pickup window and a 2,432 square foot building. The current 1.1 acre site consists of a parking lot and is part of the Walmart PDD, which was originally approved in 2007 for the current store. The PDD has been amended once for the Walmart store, and a PDD amendment has recently been recommended for approval by the Planning Commission for a Panda Express restaurant west of the proposed Chipotle restaurant that is west of the main Walmart drive from Michigan Avenue. Therefore, the proposed Chipotle PDD amendment will be the third amendment to the Walmart PDD. The site is located on the south side of Michigan Avenue, west of Belleville Road, and north of the existing Walmart. The site is Zone C3, and fast food restaurants are special land uses in the C3 district. Therefore, a use modification for the proposed fast food restaurant is not necessary in the PD agreement, and the PDD is in lieu of a special land use. Because Walmart is the only user of the site, allowing another use on the site and party to the PDD agreement requires a PDD amendment application. At its meeting on December 6, 2021, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the PDD amendment for Chipotle, subject to conditions which have been satisfied since. If the PDD amendment is approved, the next step will be for the applicant to submit a site plan application, which will be reviewed by the Planning Commission and Township Board. Director Smith, you want to add anything?
I just wanted to bring something to the board's attention, is that on the agenda, it shows, this is the amendment three to the Walmart PDD, and you'll see that your item G4 is the amendment number two of the PDD. I think that the agenda just got sent out, and they, so you're, you're hearing amendment three before you're hearing amendment two, which is coming on later into the meeting. I don't think it really has any bearing on the approval, but I just wanted to clarify that that order somehow got messed up on the agenda. And I don't know if Patrick is on the line or not. I know he was involved at another meeting and was going to get on at 7 o'clock tonight, but...
Actually, I think I saw him.
I might be flying solo, so go easy on me.
He is here, so let me move him over.
If we approve amendment three and we don't approve amendment two.
We're going to play with your mind here. Patrick, you're on, you're on this panel, just to let you know.
Thank you.
So, would you like to say anything else, Patrick?
Nothing, nothing too much to add. The, both the Chipotle and the Panda, which you'll be looking at tonight, they occupy some existing parking lots in front of the Walmart that are underutilized and are, are good real estate in terms of an underutilized parking lot. There's infrastructure in place, and actually, we'll end up with a little bit more green space than what we have now based on repurposing of that space. So I'll be happy to take any other questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the board or discussion?
All right, I'll just say that I'm kind of excited for these action items, the RBAs tonight for Michigan Avenue. Michigan Avenue is quickly becoming an area that people go, becoming a destination for people to go shopping, for people to do sports, athletics, and also, we're working on making it a technology corridor. So I think it's great that we're starting to fill in the gaps with amenities that I think people are really going to like, so I am glad. Along with our own restaurant down there at the sports complex, at the baseball complex, so I'm excited to see this.
Thank you. Just, Patrick and Jade, I see Brian Amon, his hand raised. Is he the project sponsor, or is he representing? Okay, I can, let me...thank you, Steven. Hello, Brian Amon, you said you, you're raising your hand. Is project sponsor?
Yes, thank you, Madam Supervisor. I just wanted to indicate that in order to protect the clerk's sensibilities, I will coordinate the recording of this amendment with the second amendment, so we actually do them in the order that the Planning Commission recommended them, and they, they got done. So we'll, we'll make sure we, the order follows the form, so we won't create any problems in terms of terminology.
Thank you. Any other board questions or comments? Okay, great. All right, all those approved, to the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Thank you. So, item G3, Consider Special Land Use for Fast Food Drive-Thru Restaurants Dunkin' Donuts.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board approve the following resolution, the approval of Walmart...okay, hang on. That's not going to help us. My PDF keeps resetting to 25% resolution, which is, which is beautiful. How about this, approval of the special land use for Dunkin' Donuts. Whereas project sponsor has requested special land use approval for a fast food drive-thru restaurant use on the subject tax parcel located on the east side of Hagerty Road between Michigan Avenue and Old Michigan Avenue. And whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the request and applicable criteria and voted seven to zero to recommend approval with conditions as the request meets the criteria of special land use approval in Section 27.03 subsection C of the zoning ordinance, our favorite. Now therefore be it resolved, the board trustees at Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the special land use for a fast food drive-thru restaurant use on, on the subject parcel located on the east side of Hagerty Road between Michigan Avenue and Old Michigan Avenue as the request meets the special land use criteria of Canton zoning ordinance, Canton Township zoning ordinance pursuant to the information and plans provided, subject to special design criteria noted by staff to be addressed and corrected at the time of site plan review, installation of stop bars and do not block intersection signs if permitted by Wayne County, and to limit dumpster pickup hours to the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The project sponsor proposes to construct a 1,836 square foot Dunkin' Donuts fast food drive-thru restaurant on a parcel located on the east side of Hagerty Road between Michigan Avenue and Old Michigan Avenue. The parcel is split into two separate zoning districts. The western area is Zone C3, regional commercial, and the east area is Zone C4, interchange service. The fast food drive-thru restaurant is proposed to be located entirely on the area of the parcel that is Zone C3. Fast food drive-thru restaurants are special land uses in the C3 district. At its meeting on January 3, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the special land use, subject to conditions. If the special land use is approved, the next step will be for the applicant to submit a site plan application, which will be reviewed by the Planning Commission and Township Board. The special land use plans include more details than are typically required on a special land use plan, so many of the staff comments are regarding elements that will be addressed at the time of site plan review. Director Smith, you want anything else?
I have nothing else to add.
Patrick, do you have any added anything?
Nothing else to add to the special land use. The applicants have submitted a site plan application concurrent with the special land use review, so that review is underway.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions or comments? Clerk Segras?
I have a question. Patrick, are you familiar with the grade on that, on that site? Does it grade down pretty, pretty, is the slope on that one pretty severe?
Yeah, there is quite a bit of slope, especially if you're driving down Michigan Avenue as you're going eastbound, that, that slope goes up. So there will be some, there will be some grading work. The Planning Commission had some questions about this during its review, and the applicant indicated that they would be doing a proposed retaining wall along Michigan Avenue where they're proposing grading in order to, to hold the grade and to be able to do the development. So that is something that they'll be working with, and they did indicate that they're proposing a wall along Michigan Avenue.
Okay, and the parcel is actually in two zoning areas, you're saying? So part of it's in C3, part of it's in C4, and this special land use is solely for the section of the parcel that's in C3. Is that my, is it a correct interpretation of what you're saying?
Yes, that's correct.
The first time I've ever seen that. That's rather, probably fairly unique, right, in the township, or no?
Yeah, typically to split zone on a parcel, it's, it's uncommon. It's not too rare, but usually to do so, there would have to be a very good reason to do that, because zoning lines can sometimes be a little imprecise. So if it splits through a parcel, it usually goes through like a, an alley, or a road, or some kind of a feature, unless it's surveyed or there were some other reason to do it. But it's been like that for a while, so I'm not sure what the reason was for having that split zoning.
And, and when this finally comes to us, is it going to be in the form of a, like a PDD? What, how is, how is this going to be? Do you have any idea what you would bring this to us in, or does it just be a standalone kind of thing?
Yeah, that's a good question. This, because it's a special land use in the C3 district, and there's no underlying PDD like in the case with Walmart, the applicants are proposing a generic special land use application, which is a two-step process. The first step is for the special land use and the general layout itself to be considered for action, and then if it's approved, then they follow up with a, a specific site plan that will be much more detailed and will show the final locations of all the buildings, landscaping, lighting, parking, et cetera. And the, the site plan will be reviewed by both the Planning Commission and the Township Board.
But there's no requirement for a public benefit?
That's correct. There is, there is not a requirement, since it's not a PDD.
Okay, but you're in talks with the, with the, with the, okay, I'm just looking at the narrow section of their parcel that's in that C4 district, and Trustee Borninski and I had been looking at the park desert map that we have in the township, also with our density map, and noticed that this is an area of the township, there's a substantial amount of density, but it's also a park desert, so a number of the individuals who live in those trailer parks don't have access to a park. And I see a couple, maybe like a third of an acre over there that they're not going to be using for this. So I'm wondering if at some point in time we might, how we would have that kind of a conversation with them about if the section of their parcel that's in C4, that's in between this and the Downer Cemetery that is probably undevelopable and would never be used for anything, could potentially be used for a future pocket park for the township. I don't know if there's enough space, but just something that came to mind. If this was a PDD, that would be a win-win for everybody. Unfortunately, this is not. Just putting that on everyone's radar. Something I just came to mind.
Not to speak for Patrick, but one thing that we can do, if that's a desire of the board to even discover, we can kind of plant that seed, um, with the owners, just to show that there could be some future interest, um, public-private partnership with the, with the township, um, and see what kind of reaction we get. Not knowing if they have future plans for it or not, but we can absolutely approach that.
I actually drove past this parcel a couple days ago, and I don't even know that this would be a good place for a park based on the elevation. But who knows? Thanks.
Thank you. Any other board comments or discussion? Stephen?
Uh, all right, I'll pile on. So I know it's not the purview of what we're doing tonight, but it is in terms of the coming weeks with the plan that will be presented to us. And, um, two things came to mind, um, along with what Michael was talking about, about a park, is the sidewalk on, along Michigan Avenue, and I noticed they discussed it a bit in the Planning, um, Commission notes. Um, and if there were some plan down the road to do a sidewalk under 275 for people walking along 275, um, would it be not too much of a imposition to request if they could put a extension of the existing sidewalk along Michigan Avenue? I know it wouldn't, um, today go anywhere, but it could be, you know, part of a bigger initiative to get a 275, um, sidewalk going, or Michigan Avenue sidewalk under 275. And then the other thing that I did read in the, um, Planning Commission and also concerns me, I mean, I don't have a plan to look at and how the traffic is gonna flow, and of course, there was a traffic study, but if anything's going on, if any of the exits are going on to that old Michigan Avenue, I don't know what the condition of that old Michigan Avenue is, and this could add a lot of, um, extra traffic that it's not, that road is not used to. So if there are any repairs needed for that road, it, can that be discussed in the planning process? Those are my two points.
And I can touch on the, the sidewalk piece, and then I'll throw the access piece to Patrick, but, um, in regards to sidewalk along Michigan Avenue, there are some plans, and we can get the concrete plans, I can't promise anything, but we can get with MDOT because with the 275 construction, there is, um, there is some work that's gonna be done on those entrance and exit ramps, so we can see what's happening there. And then also, uh, the fire chief, the police chief, myself, Patrick, and some other members are meeting with MDOT, I believe it's the first week of February, in regards to sidewalks on Michigan Avenue from, um, uh, 275 to Hanen going the other direction, but we are absolutely going to approach them coming further west on Michigan Avenue. Um, this was, MDOT actually reached out to the township in regards to calling this meeting, so, um, we're pretty excited to see what they have to say and see where that goes. So there are talks, and so, um, stay tuned for the sidewalk conversation to continue. In regards to the access to the site, I'll leave that up to Patrick to, to talk about.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, and to follow up on the sidewalk one, when we, we had talked about this with the Engineering Division, and, um, at this time, we had reservations of having a sidewalk in that location of Michigan Avenue that dead-ended because it would be, uh, it may be inviting, uh, people to walk or an indication that it's, it's safe to walk down, but then when they get to the dead end, uh, they may attempt, um, some kind of maneuver that may be unsafe. So that's, that's where we came on, not recommending an extension along Michigan Avenue eastward from that intersection of Hagerty at, at this time, uh, when we discussed that with, with Engineering. But as Director Smith noted, that we'll be talking with MDOT about that in a little bit more detail and see what their thoughts are. Regarding the access for Old Michigan Avenue, there was a, um, initial version of the application where they were proposing a separate driveway that went directly out to Hagerty, and we had a lot of concerns with, um, how close that driveway would have been to Michigan Avenue and how it could have bottlenecked there in terms of cars getting in and out, especially getting a left-to-hand turn going southbound Hagerty into it. So, um, they removed any access from Hagerty directly, and I don't think they ever proposed anything directly on Michigan Avenue just because of the challenges of that site. And so they only had the one access from, um, Old Michigan Avenue, and they moved that access as far, um, east as possible from the intersection of Hagerty to allow, um, cars to come in, and if they had to make a left into the Dunkin' site, there was room to stack up, and it was far away from the intersection. And so they've submitted a traffic study that indicated that, um, what they've laid out will not result in any failing conditions, um, during the AM and PM peak hour. That said, our traffic engineering consultant with Wade Trim had recommended that, um, a stop bar be painted on Hagerty Road, uh, northbound, as well as, uh, signs to do not block the intersection. Sometimes during the peak hours, there can be, uh, a backup on Hagerty Road, um, especially with large trucks, and the traffic engineering consultant had recommended something that could go on there just to indicate to northbound drivers to not block the intersection, to allow traffic to pass through. Um, the, um, applicants for Dunkin' have been accepting of that. They've reached out to Wayne County, and I think they're still waiting to hear back on that, but that, that is something that they're interested in doing, just as an indication to, uh, northbound commuters that, um, they need to keep the intersection open and to facilitate better access.
Thank you. Kate? I'm sorry, Michael?
Is Old Michigan Road, uh, still an MDOT road, or did that get surrendered to the county when they moved Michigan Avenue to the north? Does anybody know that answer? Is it a county right-of-way or is that an MDOT right-of-way?
That's a great question, and I'll have to get back to you on that because I do not know.
I'm just, because I've seen the grade on Michigan Avenue, and I don't think you can put a sidewalk there without killing people unintentionally, and so, but you could potentially have stairs go down at the end of the Michigan, Old Michigan Avenue if you wanted to have a crossing there. Um, it seems like the best way to get pedestrian traffic would be that way. But I, I can't, I guess, you know, that's not really germane to the Dunkin' Donuts conversation, unfortunately. But great questions.
Yep. I know that the cemetery is there, you just have to figure out where it kind of ends and where the fence is, but, yep.
Yeah, we need to repair that fence too, get it kind of knocked down. I saw that the other day. Additionally unrelated to the Dunkin' Donuts event issue.
Any other questions or comments? Great. All those in favor, the motions say aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion passes. Okay, now we move on to G4. G4, consider Panda Express Plan Development District Amendment, number two of Walmart PDD and Site Plan Approval.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the attached resolution for Walmart Plan Development District Amendment Number Two for Panda Express and Site Plan. Whereas project sponsor has requested approval of Amendment Number Two to the Walmart Plan Development District and approval of a site plan for Panda Express located on the south side of Michigan Avenue between Belleville Road and Back Road, and whereas Planning Commission reviewed the amended Plan Development Plan, Develop, Plan Development Agreement and Site Plan and voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the request where conditions, with conditions as it is consistent with the Walmart Plan Development and complies with the applicable site design requirements of the zoning ordinance except where modifications are approved. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees and Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve Amendment Number Two to Walmart Plan Development Plan, District and Site Plan on the subject tax parcel at 45555 Michigan Avenue as provided in the Plan Development District Agreement Amendment and Site Plan Documents, subject to any necessary modifications to the PDD agreement and access easement to the satisfaction of the Township Attorney and subject to all applicable state, county, and municipal developmental, development requirements except where modifications to the zoning ordinance have been granted.
The board?
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by trustee Steineman. The applicant proposed to split 1.3 acres from the Walmart parcel on Michigan Avenue with the intent of constructing a Panda Express fast food drive-through restaurant in a 2,300 square foot building. The current 1.3 acre site consists of a parking lot and is part of the Walmart PDD, which was originally approved in 2007 for the current store. The PDD has been amended once for the Walmart store, and the proposed Panda Express PDD amendment will be the second amendment to the Walmart PDD. Additionally, a PDD amendment has recently been recommended for approval by the Planning Commission for a Chipotle restaurant east of proposed Panda Express, east of the main Walmart drive from Michigan Ave. The proposed Chipotle restaurant would be the third amendment to the Walmart PDD, which will be, which we reviewed earlier, under a separate agenda item. The Panda Express is located on the south side of Michigan Avenue, west of Belleville Road, and north of the existing Walmart. The site is Zone C3, and the fast food restaurants are special land uses in the C3 district. Therefore, a use modification for the proposed fast food restaurant is not necessary in the PD agreement, and the PDD is in lieu of a special land use. Because Walmart is the only user of the site, allowing another use on the site and party to the PDD agreement requires a PDD amendment application. At its meeting on January 3rd, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the PDD amendment and site plan for Panda Express, subject to conditions which have since been satisfied. If the PDD amendment and site plan is approved, there will be no further reviews by the Planning Commission or Township Board unless amendments are proposed to the PDD or site plan.
Director Smith, do you want to add anything?
I have nothing else.
Okay, Patrick?
Uh, nothing else to add.
All right, any questions or comments by the board? All right, all those in favor, the motions say aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay? Great. Item G5, consider first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 74, Article 2, Division 2, Subdivision 2, to establish a pumps sanitary sewer district and other updates.
Madam Supervisor, I move to, oh, I got lost in this. I move to introduce and hold the first reading of an amendment to Chapter 74 Utilities, Article 2, Division 2, Subdivision 2, entitled Rates and Charges, and to schedule a second reading for February 8th, 2022.
Support.
But my, uh, motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. There is approximately 148 acre undeveloped south of Ford Road along Lots Road that does not have access to sanitary sewer generally south of Home Depot. Due to the Willow Creek, this area requires a sewer pump station to allow sewer service. Most of the area is currently master planned as high to medium density mixed use residential slash commercial. Biltmore, the developer of our proposed 38 acre apartment complex south of Willow Creek, Tremont, is preparing detailed engineering plans and asked if the township could financially assist with the pump station construction. They made this request in the interest of not bearing the entire estimate, estimated 1.1 million dollar cost. The sanitary facility will be turned over to the township as a public asset and will ultimately serve the larger sewer district. Municipal Services Department and Legal Counsel drafted an ordinance amendment to allow for the township to participate in the construction of the pump station and create a mechanism for the township to recover those expenditures through a unit charge for any future development, thus spreading the pump station costs amongst the current and future developments. Based on anticipated development, the unit charge has been determined to be $1,213 per unit. Biltmore has agreed to construct the pump station with reimbursement from the township for a fixed amount over their committed unit charge. The commitment from the township for the pump station will have a not to exceed amount of $774,916 paid out of the sewer fund. Note, this amount was calculated by subtracting the Tremont place per unit charges of $325,084 from 1.1 million dollars. Any cost for construction of the pump station beyond the 1.1 million estimate will be borne... Oh, this is not the correct one. Will be divided equally amongst the units.
Yeah, recalculated and spread, spread among the 907 units.
The board must amend the township's utility ordinance to establish the Lots Road Sewer District, which requires property owners within the district to pay this charge prior to tapping into the system. The draft legal summary for publication and ordinance amendment are attached. Following adoption of the ordinance, a separate board action will be forthcoming concerning the contract between the township and Biltmore, including the terms of reimbursement and provisions for design and turnover of the facilities. This amendment will also allow the Township Board the ability to approve water rates and charges by resolution, updating the process from the historical process of amending the ordinance on an annual basis. Director Smith, I think you had some more clarifications also, correct?
Um, no, the biggest one was just, we sent the revised RBA out this afternoon and had a, um, a misstatement in there about the additional cost. If the, if the final construction costs come in over 1.1 million dollars, which is the estimated, it won't just be borne by Biltmore, it'll actually be recalculated and spread among the 907 units that are estimated to go into the district. And then there were some other updates that we did for the ordinance, including, um, probably the biggest change is allowing, uh, water rate changes, um, to happen via resolution as opposed to an ordinance, uh, update on an annual basis.
And in the background, there was a second developer listed, and they're plant, Clover, which is planning senior apartments on the west side of Lots, but their final site plan has not been approved yet.
Oh, correct, sorry, thank you. Yes, and there was one more thing. Thank you trustee Berninski for catching that, uh, earlier today. This is kind of a new process for the township. I don't think that they've ever, we've ever done something like this before, but it is definitely going to, um, service the district well with the anticipated development, and also, uh, because the utility is in place, uh, there is an economic development component to this that will assist in, uh, the recruitment of future development in the area. We've worked closely with, uh, both of the developers, their engineers, our own engineering department, uh, we've been working on this for quite some time. And there will be a separate agreement that will come back before the board. This is really just addressing the ordinance changes, and this is the first reading, so the second reading will come at the next meeting. So, but there will be future agreements that will come with each developer in regards to this.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion by the board? Kate?
Hi, Director Smith, thank you for making that clarification, because I was a little confused earlier today when I was reading through it. Something I just thought of right now, and I'm sorry that I wasn't able to ask this ahead of time, but, um, the developments that this would affect, are they the only ones that this would affect, or are there people that, um, own residences in that area that could possibly tap into this?
Great question. This district is actually set up to service the vacant parcels only for future development. There is a road down the, south of, of Ford Road called Lotsford, and there are some residential homes there. Most of them, all of them are actually on septic right now, so if they wanted to, um, coordinate as a group of homes, getting the, getting the main to them would be a whole separate process. So we would work with them, could work with them on tying into this. Uh, if one home did it, it would probably not be cost, um, they wouldn't be able to do it. It wouldn't work, um, monetarily, but if they wanted to group together and do some sort of SAD or tie into the district, we have taken in those units into consideration with the size of the pump station, so they would be able to if the financing worked, and we could work with them on a separate basis.
Okay, thank you.
Would, would we notify them that this is happening so that they would find out?
We could, absolutely. Yeah, we could do some, some outreach and let them know what's happening.
Any other questions or comments? Clerk Segrist?
I will just reiterate, um, we talked about this as well. Being this close to Willow Creek, I know a substantial amount of the vacant parcels are wet in that area, and I imagine to construct this, we'll have to knock down some trees, probably have to do some mitigation of wetlands, so if there's any ability to, um, to really, as I said before, to pursue greater than the minimal stormwater retention and detention on that parcel would be fantastic. But I imagine that will be discussed, um, in whatever agreement or site plan is put together later on.
Oh, yes. Yeah, this is just the, the start of many conversations in regards to the developments and the site plans that will, that will occur out, um, on Lots Road.
Now, it did say it would be a public asset, right? So we would be responsible for long-term maintenance of this through the Water and Sewer Fund?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yes.
Okay.
And we would want that, for sure.
That would be township property. The last one, on? Okay.
Any other comments or questions? All right, all those in favor, the motions say aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion passes. Item G6, consider approval of payment to Keesler's Police Supply for ammunition purchased in excess of the 2021 purchase order.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve an additional payment to Keesler Police Supply of $6,200 for ammunition purchased in excess of the approved purchase order number listed.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Treasurer Slavens, thank you. The police department is requesting to pay an additional $6,200 to Keesler's Police Supply for ammunition purchased in excess of the 2021 purchase order. This increase is to accommodate payment of upgraded ammunition from that which was originally approved by the board. Director Bow, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, there was, uh, oversight in the PO last time. We listed both the nine millimeter and the 223 rounds, but we didn't put the 6200 dollars for the 223 rounds in the PO, so there was an oversight by us, so we're looking for the, uh, support here.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion passes. Item G7, consider approval of payment to the Michigan Humane Society for services provided in excess of the 2021...
of the 2021 purchase order.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve an additional payment to the Michigan Humane Society of $2,795 for services rendered in excess of the approved purchase order number listed.
Motion made by Clerk Seegarist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The police department is requesting to pay an additional $2,795 to the Michigan Humane Society for services rendered in excess of the 2021 blanket purchase order. Director Bauer, do you have anything to add?
Yes, we had two criminal cases which caused some animals to be placed for their safety in the custody of the Humane Society, in which the animals were held for a long period of time and causing the fees to go up outside what we had already approved through our normal process. And through the court process, it does not look like we're going to receive any funds from the defendants. They look like they're struggling themselves, so I don't see a payment coming in that regard.
Thank you. Any discussion, the board? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Item G8. Consider approving a one-year contract renewal with Michigan Police Legal Advisory Advisor Group, Inc., and associated amendment to the 2022 police budget.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a one-year contract renewal for police legal services with Michigan Police Legal Advisor Group, LLC, in the amount of $30,000, and to approve the attached budget amendment to the 2022 police budget.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seegarist, supported by Trustee Berninski. The Police and Fire Department is requesting to renew its annual contract with the Michigan Police Legal Advisor Group, Incorporated, for legal advice on administrative and operational issues, department policies, and legal update training. The contract renewal is based on 192 hours per year and is paid in monthly installments for a total cost of $30,000. In addition, the police department is requesting an amendment to its 2022 budget for this expense. Director Bauer or Director Stockline, do you have anything to add?
I can speak for, on the police side, this is really growing as a council that's happening mostly in California and Florida, and it's really starting to take off here in the state of Michigan. And since we brought on our police legal advisor, we've really been able to vet a lot of things real quick and make sure we're operating with the philosophy that we have, constitutional and holistic policing, we're able to address things immediately with our staff, and the immediate updates from the proper source, not police interpretation of law.
Yeah, on the fire side, we basically use them for our policy review, so not a whole lot of legal, you know, with the fire, but that's why the police pick up a bigger tab on this than the fire does.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Clerk Seegarist?
Kind of curious, is this Brett's contract?
That's correct.
Okay, I have worked with him as well, and he provides a really good service to the township.
True, if the board's up, would like to see some of the updates. I collect them, and just email me and I'll provide them.
Any other questions or comments? I agree, great. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passes. Item G9. Consider waiving the bidding process and approving the purchase of 11 chest compression systems and accessories from Stryker.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of 11 Lucas III chest compression systems and accessories from a sole source provider, Stryker, in the amount of $239,986.22.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seegarist, supported by Ms. Ganguly. The Stryker Lucas III device is a CPR compression system that accurately provides constant compression depth and rate during cardiopulmonary resuscitation events. The devices deliver automated uninterrupted compressions aimed at sustaining life-saving circulation during prolonged resuscitation efforts. Additionally, the devices offer operational efficiency by allowing paramedics to focus on other important tasks during the event, and leveraging post-event analysis and quality improvement to increase overall survivability. The Stryker Lucas III device is a new purchase aimed at enhancing the fire department's comprehensive approach to improving patient outcomes with return of spontaneous circulation and good neurological status. Director Stockline, do you want to add anything?
First of all, I guess I owe you guys an apology I've put in for the last three years to get this under a grant, and I've been unsuccessful, but I think it's time to move forward with it. I'd still have another grant out there trying, currently with AFG, to try and get three of the devices, but we've been pushing it off for a while. I feel very strongly that this will give the fire department the ability to have a much higher survival rate with our patients. It really does free up the patients, and it does a better chest compression than what a firefighter can do, and it's constant and consistent and meets American Heart Association guidelines. So I think with that being said, you know, it's quite a bit of money. It does include a five-year warranty for all parts, labor. These machines are going to get tossed around in the back of the ambulance when we're doing CPR or at the scene. So with that being said, you know, they're prone to damage as well, so this will also come with that five-year warranty that covers all of the parts and labor, as well as the batteries that operate that. And they hook right into our monitors, so they will do the chest compressions right along with our ability to monitor the patient's heart. It's a good device, and we had a couple of different systems in there that the firefighters did some trials on. This one worked out the best for them, it was the most convenient for them, smaller, compact, and easy to maneuver with the patient. So I think it's going to help out and helps out with additional manpower having to be on scene, so if we have to show up with two firefighters on scene, they have the ability to set that compression system up and then administer the medications while that's happening. So I think it'll be a big benefit for the department and the community.
Thank you. Any questions from the board or comments? Kate? Or Stephen?
Is there a learning curve or training that has to be done on this device?
The great news is that we've had them in the station for about the past six months demoing them, so they've got a lot of class time already on it, and they're ready to go with it.
Kate?
So I think this sounds like something that would be very beneficial to our community and to what one of the chief purposes of township government is, to, you know, provide for the safety of our community. I was just wondering if you happen to, and I'm not asking you to go and spend a lot of time on this, but if you happen to have any research on this about the effectiveness or, you know, just anything that you think the board might be interested in, I would love to take a look.
We absolutely do, and we could even show the past six months where we've been using them and how our save rates have gone up since then, so I'll get that information to you.
That would be great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passes. Item G10. Consider approving the fire department to temporarily increase the head count by one additional firefighter in anticipation of one firefighter retirement in June 2022.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve temporarily increasing the fire department head count by one additional firefighter to backfill for one firefighter retirement in June of 2022.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seegarist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Did I get that right? Two of you at the same time. In preparation for firefighter retirement expected in June, the fire department is requesting to hire a replacement firefighter now, causing an approximate two to three month overlap of salaries and benefits. This overlap is not anticipated to have a budget impact as of new firefighters coming in at a lower wage scale. Once the retirement occurs, the head count will return to the amount approved with 2022 budget. Director Stockline, do you want to add anything?
I would just add that we had a great discussion in our leadership meeting today about this succession planning, and I think that this is kind of the first step where we can try and work that in, at least on the fire side, and then through the rest of the township. So like I said, not any additional costs for us at this time, or it doesn't appear to be any additional costs with bringing in the firefighter at the lower wages, and then the one leaving at the higher wages, it kind of equals out. So it takes us about two to four months to get them hired and get them trained up, so it'll work out perfect for that June retirement.
Great, thank you. Any board questions or comments?
I just had a quick question for Director Stockline. You said it takes two to four months. We had to have the conversations about how hard it is to, you know, fill up your department in hiring new people, so you think you can get them in in this two or four months timeframe, like new person in, or have you already started talking to people, or do you have some someone in mind? I'm just wondering if you have, like, you know, you just have six months to fill this position and train them, so, because you said there's always a shortage of people when you're hiring, and you have to have a lot of time ahead to plan for this, so.
So two of these months would be included in the hiring process. We're all ready to go with HR, I've been speaking with Barb, so she's ready to put the posting out there. We've changed a couple of policies, so we believe that that'll bring the recruitment in a little bit easier, some appearance policies. But with that being said, it's usually about two months with the background and all the interviews. We just had a class graduate from Schoolcraft, and there's a couple candidates that are very interested in Canton Township, so we've kind of been keeping them on the hook here, telling them that this is coming. So hopefully that'll happen, and then it takes us about two months to train them up. So that's why we said it'll be about four months, and it'll work out well to get them involved, but that's the plan.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Great, Clerk Seegarist?
Yeah, I would just say, you know, we swore in our newest firefighter paramedic, Mr. Doherty, on Monday, so that was exciting. We got at least one fresh one. But yeah, I think this is great. I could have definitely benefited from this when I had a transition with my deputy, super or my deputy clerk. And so I think, I'm really excited about the conversation we had today from an administrative standpoint about putting together kind of a policy proposal and going to the board in a way to try to bring forward that Raftellus recommendation that we focus on succession planning, which is also a board goal, which was super awesome, and would lead to a good work environment, which is also one of the board goals too. So super excited about it, and I think it's well past time that we do something like that to allow for training, overlap.
What else? I agree, that's good. All right, all those in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passes. Thank you. Item G11. Approval of compensation of the Human Resources Manager Personnel Director to Merit Commission as required by Merit Ordinance Number 85.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the compensation of Rochelle Howell, or Rachel, is it Rochelle?
Rochelle.
Rochelle Howell, Human Resources Manager, effective February 15, 2022.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seegarist, supported by Trustee Snyderman. On January 10th, Merit Commission approved the certification of the highest three candidates on the eligibility list for the Human Resources Manager position. The township supervisor selected Rochelle Howell to fill this position. On January 10th, 2022, the Merit Commission also approved the salary recommendation as permitted under Rule 4.241A. Merit Ordinance Number 85 states that the Human Resources Manager position falls under the requirement for board approval. It is requested that Rochelle Howell start a Grade 10 Step 5, $105,617 annually, based on her experience and qualifications. Rochelle has over 15 years of professional leadership experience and is skilled in all key areas of human resources. Rochelle was with us today, she was, it was great interviewing her, she really did a good job, and we really are looking forward to Rochelle coming aboard. Rochelle, you can unmute there and say something if you like, and show yourself if you'd like, I know, so don't be shy. There we go. Hey Rochelle.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm looking forward to joining the township of Canton, and I'm looking forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, any questions or comments?
Welcome. Look forward to having you.
Very exciting.
Yes, welcome Rochelle, we're looking forward to your start date, and I hope you're pleased with your decision, we're really looking forward to it. So thank you, thank you for coming tonight and waiting so patiently.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passes, thank you Rochelle, you're on board. Hope to see you very soon.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is item G12. Consider reappointment and new appointments to the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Advisory Council.
Madam Supervisor, I move to reappoint Elaine Thomas to the CDBG Advisory Council for a three-year term to expire on December 31, 2024.
Motion made by Clerk Seegarist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Under CDBG bylaws, a confirmation of all Advisory Council members must be approved by a majority of the Board of Trustees. Elaine Thomas's term expired on 12/31/21. Mike Shepherd, employee liaison for CDBG, recommends Elaine's reappointment due to her expertise and excellent attendance. In addition, new appointments are needed to fill vacancies created by the loss of two Advisory Council members. John Spencer's term expired on 12/31/21. He declined to apply for reappointment after many years of service. Sylvester Notzle's term expires on 12/31/22. He has notified the township that he does not wish to fulfill his term. The interview committee has chosen Ethan Petzold and Kevin Zalinski to fill the two vacancies. Ethan Petzold has served on the tax board review for the last year, but the committee felt he would be a good fit for the CDBG, so he will transfer from the board of review to CDBG. Kevin Zalinski was interviewed in December 2021, and was identified as a great candidate for CDBG. In the audience, we have Elaine Thomas, so thank you very much for your service. Thank you, welcome aboard again. Looking forward to you continuing the CDBG. Let me see if we have any of the others. I do not see Ethan nor Kevin. But are there any questions from the board, questions or comments? Stephen?
I would just say a few things on this. One is, the board is continuing to fulfill on its promise to give opportunity to new people in the community on all our boards and commissions, so I'm glad to see that we have two new people on this board, and as well as Ms. Thomas, who, like so many of our board members that, commission members that were appointed just before the pandemic, didn't always have a lot of meetings to go to for the year and a half to two years that the pandemic has been going on. So we are pleased that she's willing to continue on this. This board is one that decides where we put federal dollars in our community towards where there's need in our community, and I believe all three of these people through the interviews have shown that they have the combination of knowledge and compassion that is needed to serve on this board, so I'm excited to be approving them, voting to approve them tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? Michael?
I would just point that we have two motions, I only made the one with Elaine Thomas in it, just so you know, before we move on to the next ones, we still have to do Ethan and Kevin. So speaking directly about Elaine, I've known Elaine Thomas for quite some time, and I've also seen her work on the board up to this point as well, and so I'm very happy that she is going to sign up for a reappointment because she does an excellent job. I know her background in community health and community mental health, and I think that that's key to a lot of what we like to do with CDBG, especially right now, given the challenges that we have with the global pandemic. So thank you for your service to the community, I look forward to swearing you in, provided we get a majority vote here, but you've got the recommendation of some good people here. So thank you, and I would speak on her behalf, most definitely.
Do you?
Yeah, I just want to ditto as well, and thank Elaine for continuing to serve on this committee. All your knowledge really does help the committee out a lot, so thank you very much.
Comments? All right, all those in favor of the first motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passes, thank you Elaine. And the second motion?
I move, Madam Supervisor, I move to appoint Ethan Petzold and Kevin Zalinski I move, Madam Supervisor, I move to appoint Ethan Petzold and Kevin Zalinski to the CDBG Advisory Council for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2024.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Seegarist, supported by Trustee Berninski. Any discussion, more discussion? All right, and again, I don't see them on here, but all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Great, motion passes. Great, welcome team. Last item is G 13, consider three new appointments and one reappointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Madam Supervisor, there are four resolutions. Whew, here we go. I move to, that the Canton Board of Trustees appoint Clarence Lee to fulfill the remainder of James C. Sec's term, which expires on 8/31/2022.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Seegarist, supported by Trustee Berninski. I have kind of four here, so, oh, four vacancies have been created on the Zoning Board of Appeals. James C. Sec, Chair of the ZBA, has indicated he is ready to step down after many years of excellent service. I guess I'll read it all. Item two, Greg Greco's term is expiring in February 2022, and he did not apply for reappointment. Number three, Craig Engel was the liaison between the Planning Commission and ZBA, his service ended at the conclusion of 2021. A new person was appointed to replace him on the Planning Commission, but a Planning Commission member with experiences needed for the ZBA to act as a new liaison. Number four, Greg Demopoulos serves as the alternate, alternate board member for the ZBA, and his term expired on 12/31/21. The interview committee has chosen Clarence Lee to fill the remainder of Mr. C. Sec's term, and Aaron Tassel to replace Mr. Greco. Aaron Tassel is educated in urban and regional planning at EMU and has spent his career in residential development and commercial construction. Clarence Lee has a degree in architecture and over 30 years of experience in planning and development. Alan Anken, current member of the Planning Commission, has been chosen to replace Mr. Engel and act as the liaison between the Planning Commission and ZBA. The committee has also chosen to reappoint Greg Demopoulos as the alternate. Are there any questions or comments? Stephen?
I would just reiterate what I said about the last RBA, which is that it's great that we're, that we have so many talented people in our community to fill these positions, and that we have the opportunity to do so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Great, I agree, it's been great meeting everybody during the interviews. All those in favor of the first motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. First motion passes.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the Canton Board of Trustees appoint Aaron Tassel to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire on 12/31/24.
Motion made by Clerk Seegarist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Any comments or questions? All those in favor of the second motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Third motion?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the Canton Board of Trustees appoint Alan Okin, or Alan O, Alan Okin?
Ok, okay.
Uh, Okin, there's no way in there, to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire on 12/31/23.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Seegarist, supported by Trustee Berninski. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item four?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board approve, the board reappoint Greg Demopoulos as the alternate to the Zoning Board of Appeals with a term to expire 12/31/24.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Seegarist, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Great. Congratulations, everyone. That ends the general calendar. The next item on the, on the agenda is the public comment. So we're now at the portion of our meeting for public comment. Anyone who wishes to address the board is invited to at this time. We appreciate individuals, please identify themselves, might name a community, residence, while limiting comments to three minutes. This is an opportunity for members of the public to inform the board about their views and provide input for us to take in the decision-making processes. It's not a time for questions and answers. If you seek information about the administration of the township government or are looking for response, please follow up with the staff on particular issues. So do we have anyone? Please approach the podium.
George Miller, few, a few questions that I would like to address. You're talking about a couple weeks ago, within the last month or two, about a carbon print. I want to know, since you owned Mon Dump, 20 to 50 acres behind El George's Corner Island, I'd like to know, since there's a tree planting program, when you're going to get started on it. You definitely own that property, it's in the tax records. Secondly, I want to know what Waste Management's going to do about tree program, you have a tree program on their first dump and their second dump, just off Hanton Road and Michigan Avenue. Third issue is carbon print you're worried about so much, has anybody considered that flame coming off the methane gas over there at the dump on Lily Road, three foot by 20 foot up in the air now and then shoots? Has that been addressed to the state or you guys, what, what the carbon print is on that? Then the next issue, since, I'll try to cut it short since we only have three minutes. Next issue is some of the sewer we were just talking about here, maybe I misunderstood it, that developer wants some money from the township to develop, develop that property, the sewer systems. They need to consider, some of those people over there, I know them, they're on wells, so when you dig that sewer line, you're going to change the water table. When you change the water table, you're going to suck somebody's well dry, and they're not going to have water. That happens a lot of times. And the wetlands over there, I want to know if that's going to be considered, and if the wetlands bill sometimes doesn't mean very much, because if, like, some company owns land in Wayne County, 50 acres for example, and they want to build on it, they talk to Wayne County, and they sell some land, and Wayne, they give it to Wayne County, or they swap the land back and forth, and they build exactly where they want on the wetlands. Now, the next question is, I want to know if it's been addressed, the ditches along Palmer Road where there's been flooding constantly, and some of the residents, and they've had flooding in their basements over there in Forest Brook subdivision, and last year. I'd like to know if that's going to be taken care of. Some of those ditches haven't been cleaned, I've been here since 1980. Last people that did any ditch cleaning in this township was Jake Dingleday, in the DPW Department PAC in the 70s or 80s or before. I'd like to know when that's going to be addressed. On Sheldon Road, it's always flooding there, big flood area, and over on Hagerty Road by Cherry Hill, the sewer gets plugged up there from grass and stuff, and it never gets cleaned up. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any public comments online? I'm looking for hands for public comments, I don't see hands going once, public comment twice, public comment three times. All right, thank you. So the next item on the agenda are board comments, and we'll start down with Trustee Berninski.
I don't really have anything, other than hoping everyone is staying warm, and I guess that's about it. I'm cold, so stay warm.
Thank you. Trustee Snyderman?
Nope, nothing new for me.
Treasurer Slavens?
Nothing new, other than I too am hoping everybody's staying warm and safe, I know the weather's been extremely cold lately, so.
Clerk Seegarist?
Today, January 25th, believe it or not, is National Pool Worker Recruitment Day, and I see a lot of people on the internet talking about the security of the elections. Well, now's the time to either put up or shut up. If you want to help secure the elections process now, sign up, come work for me, and let's make sure we run a good election here in Canton Township, because it's 2022, and we've got a gubernatorial election on the ballot.
Thank you. Trustee Ganguly?
I just wanted to wish the Chinese-American community in Canton a Happy Lunar New Year, which is on February 1st, and it's the Year of the Tiger, so hopefully next year we can have some celebrations probably, I don't know with the COVID situation, but I really want to acknowledge, you know, because we, we have one of the board goals as welcoming community, and we have such a diverse population in Canton, so I just want to wish the Chinese-American community a Happy New Year.
Thank you, thank you very much. The staff, any comments from the staff? All right, great. Some of the comments that I heard during public comment, we will get back to you in terms of some of these responses, the methane, you know, gas is always a concern, it's coming out of the landfills, but that is owned by Republic, and we will always ask about that, definitely, but we will get back with you on some of these responses. Also, just let the community know that we are seeing COVID numbers going down, which is good. We hope that that continues its downward trend. We still have masks for employees, and we will look at, we're looking at having that stop on February 1st for residents coming into the summit in the Township Administration Building, but some notes, we'll be going out on that on the Facebook pages. But thank you, everybody, stay warm. Any other comments that I missed? Okay. All right, well, thank you, meeting adjourned, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'm moved.
Motion made by Clerk Seegarist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Meeting adjourned, thank you, have a great night.